Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7:00 o'clock, we'll have citizens input. 7:05, we have an informational update on the coronavirus. At 7:10, we have a public hearing, New England Revolution's home games. 7:15, a public hearing on earth removal. 7:20, change of manager, Kitchen Partners LLC doing business as a union straw. We changed things around a little bit. At 7:25, we're going to have the assistant town managers update. 7:35, we have town managers update. And at 7:45, we got selectmen's update. And then we have a few action items. Chris, you want to lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Alrighty, anybody here for citizens input? If you don't, seeing none, we'll go right into our triumvirate to give us a little update on coronavirus.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Just for the people out there, refresh everybody's memory on who the triumvirate is.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Kenvin. I'm a deputy chief of the fire department and also acting as a public health nurse.
I'm John Robertson. I'm the health inspector for the Department of Health.
Good evening, Rob Verdone, executive director, Southeast Mass, 911 district.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, we're here tonight, we've been asked to address the state of Foxborough as it relates to coronavirus, where we're at and how we are approaching this rapidly emerging pandemic, or potential pandemic, for a second. So, if you'll see up on the board here, from an EMS or from a public health perspective, most of our patients are referred in through us through 911. And as we call through 911, actually, I should let Rob advance this one a little bit better for me.
Sure. So, as Deputy Chief Kevin said, most of the cases that Foxborough does see of any sick or fever cold type illnesses is presented to the EMS system through 911. And through our partnerships with the police fire departments in the two towns and eventually the four towns, we're able to glean a ton of data out and institute different monitoring systems. So, this is a dashboard that SEMR composed. We've had this in place for a while. We've modified it to address the latest threat within the newest emerging disease, which is obviously coronavirus. So, we're monitoring not only the coronavirus across the world and the country, but specific to Mansfield and Foxborough, where we're seeing not only coronavirus, suspected coronavirus cases, but fever cough, nausea vomiting, psychiatric emergencies, overdoses, and different things that affect public health in general. So, we're able to present this to the fire departments and the public health departments to better advise their decision makings, decision making. The other thing we're able to do is, due to some regulatory issues that are presented between the public health departments and the EMS agencies regarding sharing information, we're a conduit that allows that information sharing. So, through the 911 call to the EMS system, we're able to advise them that certain patients are presenting with signs and symptoms of communicable diseases, so.
Okay, so with that being said, that gives us a lot of information. Now, as the public health nurse, I'm also in constant communication with the Department of Public Health, able to look at what's called the MAVEN, which is the Massachusetts epironological virtual network. Essentially, when the CDC puts out memos or information to health departments in local states, the states then filter that information down as health care providers report in test results or data, so that the local boards of health can do the follow-up. John, myself, and Pauline have been working very closely with regards to making sure that we monitor this and we're in constant communication. As of right now, the state of Massachusetts, the state lab has just achieved status to do testing for COVID-19. These test kits have been approved by the CDC and usually take about 20 hours to turn around and give you a result. As of right now, we have two cases in Massachusetts of the coronavirus. One is a 20-year-old woman in Norfolk County who is doing very, very well and is on the road of recovery, as a matter of fact. The numbers that you see there are from this morning. John Hopkins has updated that now to quite a few more cases. Oh, we lost that, went to sleep on us. Quite a few cases nationally. We still have up to six deaths nationally, and there are 13 reporting states. Now, with coronavirus, the coronavirus, people say it's just a cold virus, which isn't true. The coronavirus is much different. It has characteristics and attributes that are still requiring determination and assessment by researchers. So, to say the coronavirus is not anything more than a cold is a misstatement. The thing about the coronavirus is that it is very insidious. You have a long incubation period, upwards to two weeks. Right now, they're saying about four days, if you've been exposed to it, between four and 14 days before you show symptoms. Obviously, when you show symptoms, you're much more contagious, and that's when the disease is the most prevalent. However, it's that period before that that we're most worried about. So, the CDC has made recommendations to the DPH for surveillance and monitoring. So, outside of proper hand hygiene, I'm talking excellent hygiene, washing your hands, maintaining, if you have to cough or sneeze, you cough and sneeze into your elbow, which isn't the best case, but it provides that protection from droplet spread. They believe that coronavirus, COVID-19, is spread by droplet or respiratory secretions. So, if you would cough or sneeze, usually the general perception is that you have three to six feet away from that person who's coughing or sneezing. You keep that space, the droplets can actually fall. It's believed to go through mucous membranes, through the nose, mouth, and eyes, although the eyes is the least thought of route of transmission. The concern is that it presents a lot like influenza. And just to give you a frame of reference, influenza, right now, we're up to 32 million cases in the United States with 310 hospitalizations. And we're looking at 3,100, over 3,100 deaths nationally, where we have 108 cases of coronavirus in the U.S. and six deaths. So, just to put that in perspective, the risk is there, but it's also very low, especially for Massachusetts or Norfolk County, for that matter. When it comes to patients who are suspected to have been exposed to coronavirus, there is a whole monitoring system that DPH will institute. Healthcare providers are now obligated to report people who they think are being, or who they think have been exposed to COVID-19 or have been in the travel, country of travel, I'm sorry, multi-fold right now, the country of travel. So, the countries being South Korea, China, Iran, Italy, these are the countries that are now level three. So, it's essential travel only. They don't want you going there if you don't have to go there. And there's level two, which is enhanced precautions, which would be some of the other countries in the surrounding areas. And level one would be just normal precautions that you normally take. So, with all that being said, I think we just have to emphasize strong situational awareness. If you see someone who's sick, stay away from them. If you are sick, do not go to work or go to school. I think the school systems have their own course guidelines that are issued by the CDC. They'll be following. For us, for first responders in town, our first responders, you might see us wearing the N95 particular respirator masks. That is to prevent the inhalation of any bacteriums or any viruses. The average person wearing the mask is not required. The people that you see in the street or in the community that should be wearing masks are the ones who are sick, and they wear the regular surgical mask because that keeps the spread of the droplets from expanding past their mouths or their noses. That's really all those masks are for. The masks really don't provide a lot of protection because you take that mask off, you touch the table, you touch your nose, and defeats the purpose of trying to isolate. So, masks are for healthcare providers. As of right now, obviously, there is no vaccine for COVID-19, although that CDC, and I know many countries are working on a vaccine, hopefully starting on human trials in April. But as of right now, there's no vaccine for it. And coronaviruses tend to evolve very quickly, and we still aren't sure of how this virus is going to present in its end form. So, as of right now, we are doing very well in Foxborough. I haven't been notified of any cases in Foxborough that even require any monitoring. Monitoring would be people who are quarantined in the home for two weeks, where they have a temperature guide. If they have a temperature, they'll take that temperature and they call the public health officials every day, every day, just to monitor where they're at. If they do great for those two weeks, then they pass and they're cleared. If they don't, then they follow up with the healthcare providers for the testing and diagnostic treatments. But as of right now, just good hand hygiene, good social awareness, the same type of precautions you would take for influenza. However, they're not to say the influenza or coronavirus are the same because they're not, but the precautions as of right now are very similar and the same.
Questions from the board? Great presentation. Thanks for the update.
John, anything you have to say?
Anything you want to add, John?
I'm sorry, what was?
Anything you want to add?
You know, we're working closely with the deputy chief. You know, I think I'd really just echo what he said. We're trying to spread the word about the, you know, taking what would typically be the flu protocols and good hand hygiene, and we're trying to put that awareness out. We've got flyers out at the informational table here, upstairs, the senior center of the library, and we have links on our website to CDC and Mass DPH. So, people who are curious or have questions, they can very easily get the information. And the CDC and Mass DPH are updating regularly. Also, in our office, we're doing regular phone calls with DPH where they're updating us. We had a long one yesterday. Last week, we did with CDC. So, we're trying to stay up to date.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. All right, 7:10, public hearing, New England Revs, home games.
Public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations. We'll conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, beginning at 7:10 p.m. in the Galler Meeting Room, 40 South Street, to review the application submitted by Kraft Soccer LLC for the 2020 New England Revolution Home Games, including potential home playoff games, as well as international matched and double headers that will include the Revolution. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for these events is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right, Jess, you're up.
Jess Yenos with Gillette Stadium, Kraft Sports and Entertainment. So, we're here before you this evening to talk through the license for the New England Revolution's 2020 season. This is exciting because this is their 25th season, which is pretty impressive. There really aren't any significant changes to the overall operation of the building or how we are operating these matches in this upcoming year. We are excited because our season tickets are actually trending higher than they have in the previous years, which is really exciting. And there are a lot of different elements, and there's a lot of pageantry sort of surrounding this in this 25th season that you'll see. So, we're trying to incorporate different elements of the previous teams, kind of where the franchise has been and where they're looking to go. But the milestone is significant, so you'll see a lot of that sort of throughout the season. It's a standard season in that it's 17 home games plus potential playoffs. We saw last season that the MLS actually condensed the overall season down, so we picked up a couple of extra early spring matches and lost some of those fall matches, which is unfortunate for us in New England because it leads to, we lose some of those really great weather games that we tend to see towards the end of the year, and we've got them now in early March when you just never know what the weather's going to look like. But we dealt with it last season. It certainly seems to be the way the league is going to continue to operate. This year, we're also hosting the Revs Two, which is essentially the farm team for the Revs. It's USL's feeder system, not unlike a 1AA or 1A baseball team. So, they also will be playing on the field during their own schedule. The other changes to the overall operation, I guess, which really isn't even game day, but is the Revs did open a new training facility back in December, which there have been a couple of different open houses, different invitations for residents at different times to sort of come in and tour it. It doesn't impact the day of game operation at all, but as a training facility, it's truly state-of-the-art. It's the best in the league. It's a beautiful building. It's sort of tucked up on the property. It's not, you can't see it from the stadium, and you can't spot the stadium from it, but it's a really beautiful building, and that's where their operation is housed now. So, where they were kind of spread out throughout the stadium proper for the last 25 years, now they have a dedicated training facility, which is an important step for them and just their overall operation, but also sort of in the brand perception. And so, that opening was caused for a lot of celebration, and it was an exciting step for them. Another change that you'll see at the stadium as it pertains to the Revs, but also all of our events, is that we're now going to, we have an updated bag policy. So, we're doing a lot of messaging. We've already started messaging that out because anytime we've seen, anytime you shift what that policy is, you're going to have an education campaign in front of you to help alleviate the customer service issues that inevitably come with that. The only change to the policy is that the handheld bag, so right now, you can have a clear court bag, a clear bag, or you can have a small clutch, and that small clutch can be opaque, and that's what's changing. So, right now, we've always said a clutch about the size of your hand. It's even, look at that.
This used to fit, this used to be able to come in?
That used to be able to come in, and it won't now.
And it won't?
It won't. No, no, it's actually trimmed down a little bit in size.
It's been smaller than that.
Even smaller, yeah. So, I mean, you see where we're going here eventually. I think it'll just probably will be phased out entirely, but that policy is going to be the same across all of our events at the stadium. To sort of combat the customer service issues that we see, anytime we change our bag policy, we're actually going to have a locker system in place this year. So, our security team has worked pretty closely with public safety to sort of talk through the concept, and it's not unlike what we see at a lot of other NFL stadiums, obviously because the bag policy is across the entire league. We'll actually have lockers in place that are essentially, you're able to rent them, and if you get up to the gate and your bag is not the right size and you can't get rid of it and you don't want to go back to your car, or if you took public transit to get to the stadium and you don't even have that option, you can rent this locker, have the key, leave your belongings in it, and then come back and pick them up at the end of the event, which is, will be a nice option to have. And there's a really detailed screening process and protocol for all of those bags so that they're properly screened before they're placed into any sort of holding area. But it'll give our customers and our guests that come on site another opportunity to, other than just go back to your vehicle or throw it away. So, we've seen a lot of demand for that, and we know the company that we're using also does, provides this service at a couple of different stadiums. Most notably, they do this in Dallas at AT&amp;T. So, they're used to the scope and the scale and the amount of demand that we anticipate seeing for the service.
So, that would be a private company that would screen it, provide the lockers and all that?
They'll work, as far as the actual screening, I think that that's actually done on our end, or at least it's done in concert with our security team, but it's a private company that provides the lockers themselves and essentially all of the mechanisms to operate those lockers. And they're actually on flatbeds. They'll drive the trucks in and operate them.
Okay. And the screening would be just bag search, or would it go through like, you know, what you'd do at the airport?
A little bit of both. So, there'll be an actual, it'll be a visual screen, but then there'll also be some sort of metal detection or a detection apparatus there as well. The hope is that we educate our guests that are coming on site well enough so that that's not a route that they choose to go, but if they get on site and they're stuck, that they have an option, additional option now that we didn't provide earlier.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee. We thought they did a very thorough job of vetting the, I don't say the issues, but also the season as it's looking to unfold. Kind of excited, and we voted as a board to unanimously recommend for you bring it forward for approval.
Thank you, George. This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public? No, anyone from the board have any further questions?
25 years, they got it right.
I hope so.
I don't think there's any surprises.
No, and that, to have that new training facility on the 25th year, that place is gorgeous.
Beautiful.
We were invited, I think Bill and I went, and it's gorgeous. And you can't believe it, it's in the middle, you can't see anything from there. It's in the middle of the woods.
Completely isolated.
It is. And it's nice because it gives them their sense of, you know, obviously, they're on site. It's all part of our overall site, but it gives them their own space. It's a truly dedicated area. It allows them to sort of operate on their own and continue to build the brand, and so it's a great step for the franchise, it really was.
Yeah, that's super. Move to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Make a motion to approve the Kraft Soccer LLC application for the 2020 New England Revolution Home Games, including potential home games, as well as international match and double headers that include the Revolution.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, great season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Best job, Rich.
Bye, Rich. All right, public hearing on earth removal permit.
Notice of a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and, I'm sorry, the off one. To go back, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL, Chapter 140, Section 181, Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229. And I appear to only have...
Do you want me to read it? I have it up.
No, I've got the rest of it now.
Okay.
To review an application submitted by River Ridge Holdings LLC for an earth removal permit to be exercised at East Belcher Road, Foxborough, Mass. Loom depth to be approximately 10 to 12 inches on depth throughout the site and sent to local ready-mix concrete company, Truska. Stumps will be removed and disposed of legally off-site. Any excess fill from the drainage work will be removed and disposed of legally off-site as well. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All righty. Go ahead. Yeah, state your name. My name is Bob Baker. I'm a partner and owner of River Ridge Holdings, LLC. I am also owner of Rebco Inc. We're a site contractor, and we will be performing the work. Here before the board, looking for permission for an earth removal permit for excess fill that will be created during the construction of the road and all the lots. I have plans for the board, if I can approach and give you guys a couple just for record. Sure. I've got three, so I don't know how we want to divide them up.
It's okay, I'd rather have them see it.
Put one between... You know, why towns have this and...
Well, the reason why earth removal permits are put in place is because over the years, a number of towns have found that developments were occurring and the topsoil conditions began to erode throughout the communities because the topsoil was being removed and taken out of town, to other communities. So, a lot of places have put these bylaws in place so that the material stays within the borders of the community. Unless there was a limitation placed before the town, usually in the board, in this case, the Board of Selectmen. In other cases, it's planning board, it can be, it's only a board of appeals. But in this case, it's the Board of Selectmen makes that.
The first page gives you an overview of the plan and a topographic view, just to give you, you can see the steep and close contour lines. That shows you where the cuts are. I, we've done a rough estimate of what we're going to need to meet these, the road elevations on all the lots as well, so that we've calculated and combined that into this same permit. The actual road itself, there's going to be approximately 12,000 to 13,000 yards excess coming out of the physical road and right away in the slope easements that you see. And in the lots, there's probably going to be just about the same amount. We are going to reuse everything we can on site. We're going to process the material and use it for gravel, use it to fill the lots. So, we'd like to keep as much as possible on site as we can and reuse it for our means, but there will still be excess. I mean, I don't think, I don't see there being as much loom as there is actual, you know, the C layer, the A and the B layer, more or less, the loom. I think will get reused on site. Put that off to the side. It'll get, it'll get put aside, we'll screen and reuse it on all the lots, not get disturbed. But there's, it's inevitable, there's going to be excess fill and, you know, to be removed from the site. There's no, there's nowhere to put it.
So, you had thrown out two different sets of numbers total, like 26,000?
25, 25 yards, yeah.
And that, is that the amount you anticipate taking off-site, or that's the total amount?
That's the number I anticipate taking off-site. There's probably a little more, closer to almost 30, but we'll use 5,000 or 6,000. You know, at this point, you don't know how much waste there is in it.
Yeah.
So, when we screen the product, we'll take the dirt and the fines out of it, any of the excess rock and stuff like that will be, we'll stockpile it, and Truska Brothers will sell to one of those, you know, local, or not sell necessarily, but they'll come take it away and use it as their aggregate for their concrete product.
So, I'm not going to pretend to know much about this, but just a question I saw that just conflicted. So, at one point, it says that stumps will be removed legally off-site, and I know that, you know, you don't want to fill with stumps.
Yep.
And then in other areas of the application, it talks about grinding the stumps and using them on site, so it's just kind of a conflict there in the information, our package.
So, I guess the stumps will be removed legally, they're going to be pulled from the ground, and they're going to be ground in a tub grinder, they grind them now, in a tub grinder, they'll be made mulch, it'll make a mulch product.
So, it just says that they, it says any, it says stumps will be removed and disposed of legally off-site.
Yeah, well, that was my mistake.
Any concern, I don't know if there's any concern.
So, you either, at the time we were doing it, we didn't have a contractor on board, so we were going either direction. So, tree cutters, there are two different routes they go. Some tree companies come in, will just cut the trees, and will have to physically remove the stumps and put them in dumpsters and dispose of them. The company that we actually hired will physically cut the trees, remove that, remove all the lumber, and then they physically pull the stumps out and they put them in a big tub grinder and grind them in place. And we had the option to keep, or they'll take them and dispose, I don't know, I think they sell them to pulp or, you know, mulch yards and whatnot.
Is the chairman?
The physical mass will not be buried, you know, and I know that's an issue in the past because, believe me, I've uncovered stump tops. And they're still there, 25 years.
Doesn't work well on foundations, doesn't work very well on foundations.
So, is there any difference in, you know, maybe someone else on the board knows this better than I do, but like Chris Gallagher's memo says, "Stumps shall not be used as backfill material," so is, like, is there a difference with mulching and backfill that we need to?
Yeah, they just don't want to take the, pull the stump out of the ground and use it to backfill.
Okay, okay.
Because those decay over time.
Right, and then you lose your fill, okay.
That was the, years ago, they used to find a lot line, dig a hole in the lot line, put the stumps in there and take the gravel out. So, that becomes backfill, it fills the void for a while, and then you reuse the soil that you take out of it.
I don't think anybody at all anymore would even attempt to.
No.
Being old.
That's a, yeah. It's from days past. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just, so Bob, are you familiar with a lot of that Chris put together and was sent to you?
Yes.
Okay, so, and none of the conditions there cause you any concern?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve River Ridge Holdings LLC application for an earth removal permit to be exercised at East Belcher Road, Foxborough, Mass, under the conditions set forth by the Board of Selectmen.
Second. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, just under discussion, are you anticipating doing all of the site work all right away, or is it going to be in phases?
No, it'll be, I'll build it once, yeah. We'll work our way, we're going to work our way into that for a sec, and then work our way through.
So, all the trucking off-site will all kind of happen in a...
It'll happen over time. It won't happen at one, like, as we work our way... It won't happen at, at one, like, as we work our way into that first cul-de-sac, you can see, there's a reasonably good-sized cut. I, I think a lot of that material will reuse on-site, we'll use it as fill in the lots.
Okay.
Because the fill to the left side and the lots up in the front are going to require some, so.
Yeah.
So, once we, once we get further into that, that second leg of the road there, you know, it'll, it'll create more. But it'll be ongoing, like I say, it won't be, it's not going to be continuous.
Are you going to, are you going to stockpile then haul, or haul as you...
No, we'll, we'll probably load right out of the face, yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
We got a motion. Did you say the motion? You did.
Uh...
Seconded.
Yes, I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thanks, Bob.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want your plans back?
Sure.
We might want to keep one set of plans for the record, please.
All right. 7:20, couple of minutes behind. Change of manager, Kitchen Partners LLC, doing business as Union Straw.
I'm just going to recuse myself and sit in the audience as well.
Oh, you don't.
Actually, this isn't a public hearing, I feel I don't need to.
Yeah, this is not a public hearing. All righty.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. How are we doing this afternoon?
Good, how are you?
Excuse me. I should have looked.
Question is, how are you?
Lucky night, there was no fall.
Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the change and...
Awesome. My name is Craig Carrera. I'm originally from Massachusetts. I was born in Framingham. I have traveled the country the past few years, past eight years. I ran a graphic design merchandising company, selling direct to consumers at art festivals all around the country. That also led into working with artists, bands, merchandising. I have direct connections overseas that I was working with people during these times. I did it for about eight years. I had a blast, and I was just, got, hit a, hit a spot where I was ready for a change. My brother is one of the owners in the restaurant. Over the past few years, with them getting it up and going and, you know, getting some things together, you know, we've been discussing the restaurant. Our general manager, Steve, had stepped away, and it felt like the perfect opportunity, not only for a great career growth, but also to come back and be around my family. So, January 24-ish, I was informed, you know, I was offered a position at the restaurant, and I accepted. I hopped in my car, drove back, and hit the grounds running. I'm excited to be back in Foxborough. I'm excited to be around successful people that can help guide me in the right direction as far as my career growth, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to be here.
Any questions from the board?
Could you describe, sir, any particular background about managing a restaurant?
And before I started my graphic design company in 2010, or 2008, I started at the back of the house in a fine dining restaurant in Mississippi. I was about an hour south of Memphis. It was Tupelo, Mississippi. The place was Fair Park Grill. I started in the back of the house. I wanted to move to the front of the house to start learning hospitality, customer service. And I spent three years in the front of the house as an assistant manager. And then I left that position to be, to do my own graphic design company. I feel like I've taken the most experience out of my graphic design company as far as hospitality, customer service, and making sure that we provide nothing but the best service to people when they walk through our doors.
Any other questions?
Ever been a manager of an alcohol license before?
This is my first one. Yes, sir. I did take all my certificates, though, before I started. I feel very confident that we could, you know, make sure that there's no issues, no, no problems escalate in the, in the restaurant, you know. I completely understand how valuable not only the license is to the restaurant, but to the community, you know. What are we without our liquor license? So, that is one of my biggest factors, is to make sure that I'm on top of, we're doing everything right.
And appropriate.
Are you aware of Foxcares?
What was that, sir? Sorry.
Aware of Foxcares?
Foxcares? No, sir.
Somebody will be reaching out to you to inform you about Foxcares. So, Foxcares is a, a group of restaurant owners.
Yes, sir.
That promote self-awareness on proper service of alcohol.
Yes, sir.
It's a good group. They do a lot of self-policing. I think it would be a good group for you to be involved with.
Yes, sir.
Because you are, are new to the industry.
Yes, sir.
To be able to answer a lot of questions and open your eyes to a lot of, let's say, unworthy characters.
Yes, sir.
Regarding fake IDs and other stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
I'll, somebody reach out to you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there a, another, like, an assistant manager, or are you the sole manager?
There is. There's Chef Dan. He is our head chef. He runs all of the back of the house, dishwashing, cooking, all of that aspect of the plate, of the restaurant. We also have a sous chef, which she is similar to an assistant manager, you know, but she has a college degree. She's in the back of the house. And then there is another lady that we brought on. She's going to be an assistant bar manager. She's going to be handling the scheduling, she's going to be handling putting drinks together and helping me take some nights off of my plate, so I'm not working there every single night.
Good news for you.
Yes, it is. It's very good news.
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask, because, I mean, as a manager of a restaurant, I know this crazy schedule, crazy hours, and I noticed that, you know, you put, you'd be there 40 hours a week, which I think is low.
Oh, yes. I'm currently, I'll be working somewhere between 50 to 55 hours a week.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any further discussion?
No, and we're, we're the local licensing board, you still have to get approval from the ABCC.
Okay, yes, sir.
Motion to approve Kitchen Partners LLC, doing business as Union Straw, for change of manager, from Stephen Pessek to Craig Carrera.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Upstanding.
Oh, in my hands, 4-0-1.
Okay.
Forgot already. All right, all set. Thank you very much.
Much as a pleasure. Hope you guys come join us one night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to zip right through Assistant Town Manager's update and...
You really are, because he's not here.
Try to catch up a little bit. Town Manager's update.
So, I have some really good news to talk about tonight. I'll get to that in just a minute, but I just do want to let the board know that you have the, the annual town meeting warrant in draft form, and we're going to start taking this up as, on your agenda at the next meeting. So, it'll be on the 17th, which is St. Patty's Day, so this will be on the agenda for that night.
Do we have a copy of that?
Just, I think we, we sent, we sent this out, right? Katie, I thought Katie sent it out?
We can, I can send it out.
We'll get it out to you. Okay, all right. It was just, we just wrapped it up today, actually, so you should, you should be getting this today anyway, so. So, we'll get, we'll get it out to you, so sorry about that. And so, that is something else we need to get moving on now, because we're getting, we're going to be on the budget cycle and into the warrant piece. It's not a lot of articles. I think we're in the 16, 17 article range at this point for the annual town meeting, which is not a lot. So, not a lot of things, not a lot of zoning issues this year, which is, I guess, a good thing, because we will probably won't see things until the fall, if we do see anything like that. So, I want to read into the record a letter which I received yesterday, and I was asked that I could just read this publicly to the board, and it's great news, it really is. This is addressed to myself from, from Steve Sacco, Vice President, Safety, Environmental and Real Estate, from Snyder, Snyder Electric. It says, "Dear Bill, Snyder Electric's ongoing relationship with the Town of Foxborough dates back more than a century through the company's acquisition of Inventus in 2014 and previously the Foxborough Company. We are, we and our employees are proud of the company's long association with the town and our active leadership role in helping to advance the needs of the important business, civic and educational initiatives, such as the Inventus-Foxborough YMCA, Snyder Electric's Learning Center at the Lane Homestead, and our ongoing support of the host of community and school endeavors. Our aim is to support the communities where we have a presence and that our employees call home. To that end, I am pleased to be able to inform you, the Board of Selectmen and the community of two substantial commitments totaling $250,000 that Snyder Electric is making to the Town in Foxborough. First is $150,000 commitment to underwrite the modernization of the electrical distribution system, control systems, lighting, and other energy infrastructure supporting the Town Common. The modernization project will enhance the efficiency of the electric, electrical infrastructure in a safe and sustainable manner, ensuring the Town Common remains a central point of community action activities now and for future generations. $100,000 commitment to create scholarship fund for Foxborough High School graduates pursuing careers in STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics professions. Graduating seniors from Foxborough attending university or college to study the, in STEM related field will be eligible to apply. We believe strongly in Inventus and Foxborough, investing in Foxborough, and are proud to fund these two very important initiatives which will benefit citizens for years to come. And science is still yours. Stephen P. Sacco, Vice President, Safety, Environmental and Real Estate." Extraordinary, extraordinary. So, I, I think we will formally adopt this. I, I put this for formal acceptance at your next meeting, but it'd be nice if you just gave an indication that you will accept it, because I think they would like to know that this is going to be something that the town will certainly accept. This $150,000 grant towards the common eliminates a need for discussion of this even on, on this coming weekend, because we had, this weekend is the discussion of the common, of the capital items, and this was one of the items that we were going to try and fund. So, this takes a huge amount of pressure off that process, and I'm very grateful for the efforts that they've made to try and make this happen. I did notify Bill Yuchner and Amy, Amy Burrows about, about this, and they were, they actually came by and talked to me about this yesterday, and they, they asked, they asked if I would hold off in letting everybody know until tonight, because it was such a great, great announcement to make publicly. So, I respected that, and here we are tonight, and this is a, really, a tremendous opportunity for the community, and I'm really, I think we're all very grateful for the efforts to do that.
Should we take a straw poll?
Yes, if you would, only so it just, that, you know, I would ask that you informally accept it tonight, and we'll formally accept it as a next consent, it's not on your agenda tonight.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, just, my only question would be very thankful for the scholarship fund. I'd imagine there's a lot more that has to be set up.
That will go to the school department. The school department will handle that piece.
This is strictly for the... This is just the...
This is just the, just the, just the common.
So, just out of curiosity, all those in favor?
Great.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I was going to say no on Saturday.
But I just wanted to be able to report back to them that that was the case, but thank you. And also, I think it'd be nice to bring them in at some point to, to actually formally thank them as well for that, because that's, it's a really great thing for the community.
Do you think it would be possible for you to reach out and mention the fact that we're going to have the formal acceptance vote?
I will do that.
Of the next meeting?
Yes. We can do that. That's probably, that's a great idea.
And instead of action items, we can bring it up to a...
Yeah, it's a formal acceptance.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. And then the other good news to report is information we received on Friday, that the Town of Foxborough's rating from S&amp;P Global Ratings was confirmed at AAA rating. We first received that rating in 2016, and, and then last night, this is the first time it's been reviewed since 2016, and it's the first time it's been, it's been acknowledged and confirmed for being at that level again. I think what's particularly important is, is not just the, the fact that it's AAA, it's the report that came with it, because it cites some extraordinary, really good comments about the town and how well the town has managed its finances over the years, and it talks about really the history and the ongoing efforts that are done to try and keep the town in a really good position financially. I think it was said by the, a member of the advisory committee at the last meeting that we had, or we talked together about it, that, you know, this, this type of thing is not done very easily. In fact, it's noted that this actually, this, it's actually in the report, that our rating is actually higher than the US federal government at this point, which is not, not easy to do as you might, might expect. And then it also speaks to the, to the hard work that collectively that this town does to position itself for that, and that means all the economic development that goes on, all the financial management that goes on, all the, the budgeting efforts, everything that goes along with that is sort of a confirmation of that in this, in this report. And so, I think this is, is something that I'm very, I'm personally very proud of, but I think the community as a whole should be very proud of as, as we move forward from here. And what's, I think what's probably most significant about this particular rating is that we could not have picked a better time to go to the market for borrowing money for the new, the new school and for also the water treatment plant. So, this $26 million and change issuance will probably come in at some of the lowest rates since 1886. So, that's what our advisor has indicated to us, and we're hoping that will in fact be the case when it goes out the bid, I believe by next week. So, we're very, very pleased to be able to report that information. That also will have an impact upon, you know, how much we planned for in terms of our budget for this, and also gives us an opportunity to look, as Bill Yuchner pointed out, an opportunity for us to look at, maybe we structure the debt a little bit differently because we're paying at such a low rate. The other thing that it presents us, the opportunity to do is to actually look at our existing debt and to see if it makes sense for us to actually refinance some of our existing debt at much lower rates, given the fact that rates, and the most recent issuances that we've done are somewhere in the order of 2, 2.1, 2.2. If we were able to shave a point off of that financing for the remaining, for the, you know, the remaining debt that we have, that will save significant dollars to the town in, in going forward as well. So, we're looking at that. George Samir is looking at that, talking to our financial advisor about whether or not that's a possibility, but I think this is probably the best time that I've ever seen to actually borrow for money for projects that will certainly benefit this community. So, I'm very pleased to report on both those fronts. I don't have anything else to tell you at this point, but I think that's enough, but thank you.
Great, absolutely great news. Selectmen's update. What I have under there is a discussion on old business and new business. Leah brought up a good point when a, a couple of us got together a week or so ago, of sometimes old business sort of gets lost in the shuffle. So, what I thought we'd do is have a section under Selectmen's update of new business, not a discussion, but if someone wants to bring up something for the next board meeting, that maybe that's an area where we could start the process of bringing it up. But even more importantly, old business. If there was something that we haven't discussed in a while and one of the board members wants to bring it up again, we can bring it up under this category for discussion in two weeks. We can't discuss anything because it wasn't on the agenda, but it gives us an opportunity to maybe refresh or reset the computer, as you just did when you first got here, and bring things forward. So, I think it was an excellent idea by Leah, and I think we're going to do that going forward. Any thoughts on that?
I think it would be an excellent idea to be able to have that discussion amongst board members, you know, as to how we're tracking different items.
Exactly.
Yeah, like, sometimes we get emails and, you know, there's other conversations that are going on, like, old business makes me think of, like, the train. I know that Bill and Doc are, you know, meeting, you know, having meetings, and, you know, sometimes that update can be good to just kind of quickly get, you know, just as, there's kind of no space to really check in on some of those old items.
No, I think, I think it's a great idea. So, that's what that's, under, under that, a discussion on that. Any other Selectmen's update that anybody can think of?
I had one, I didn't want to skip over, but for new business, again, back to another, do you mind if I go there? Is that, did you?
No, we can get started right away.
So, again, I kind of go back to the emails that we get, you know, from various citizens, and I, I talked to Bill and I asked him maybe to just kind of do a quick education piece. Doc and I got an email. piece. Doc and I got an email. People seem to be under the perception still, some people, that the town owns trash removal. So, someone sent us an email and said, "Hey, why don't we go back out and negotiate a better rate for all of us?" You know, the reality is, you know, if you, if you Google it, the cost of, of trash removal is going up for everyone everywhere. And I just want to build a kind of educate folks to understand that it's not a program that's, that's through the town, so there's not something for us to really go back out and negotiate right now. You know, people can go out, there's a list of all the haulers on the Board of Health's page, and, you know, choose their own, their own trash, so.
Good start. So, we'll do that on, we'll put that as an agenda item.
Well, I don't think we even need to do it as an agenda item. I think we can just hit it and be done with it.
This is educational, so it's more than.
Yeah.
It's more than, so, with respect to the trash program, this was not something that, this actually preceded every one of us sitting at the table here, so this happened a long, long time ago. But the town has, does not actually have a formal trash program. We, we have, you know, in many ways, oftentimes, indicated to people that, that duly, which is now actually United.
Materials.
Materials, thank you, management, thank you, is now the official, not official, but sort of like the most commonly used hauler in town for trash. The town does not have a trash program. We do not pay for a trash program, so that we do not contract for, for a trash program. They do pick up our trash, and, and it's, because of the fact they are the biggest taller in town, they do pick up the town's trash as well. But I will say this, that in this, and it's actually not a bad thing in, in many ways that the town doesn't do this, and this, this work at this time, because the, the market is, is evolving right before our eyes. This is a, a, a highly market-driven business, where the market changes all the time, the prices change all the time, and those people who are receiving the service actually can actually control their own destiny, because this is a case where you can actually go out and, and buy and, and contract with any service that you so choose. I think you'll probably find that the local person is probably the most competitive, so in fairness to them, I'm, I'm not trying to steer anybody away from them, but it's , they probably are the most competitive in terms of, of their service. But having said that, there are, if you are unhappy with the service, you have options, and that's something that you can always look to if you, if you remain unhappy with that service. But more importantly, it's that because family sizes vary throughout the community, you may have a situation where you have a one-person household, and they generate one bag of trash, maybe even a half a bag of trash each week, where you have other families that may generate three or four bags of trash each week. But if the town were to run that program, the town would have one set value for every single household, regardless of how big the household or how small it is. So, therefore, we pay, as if we were to pay as a town, we would pay that, that set value across the board. So, I think in many ways, you can actually control your own situation by having your own pro, your trash program. Recycling, of course, is, I think that actually also encourages people to recycle more, because it's less trash that you actually have to put in a bag, and then usually recycling is, is a little bit less in terms of, of removal. So, I think it actually encourages recycling more to actually have your own program. But, so, that's sort of like a synopsis of what's been going on here in Foxborough. This is not the only town that has this kind of arrangement. There are, there are several others as well. But for us to get into that business now would be a significant cost to the community. We were talking several million dollars to do that work now, and it would certainly take a bite into existing services that we currently have in order to actually take that service on, where I don't think it would be truly advantageous to the community in many ways. So, so that's really the, an educational piece, that this is not a town service, but it is a, a service that we certainly encourage and want people to participate in to make sure that, that the town remains clean and, and orderly.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, action items?
Yes, we have seven items on the board. First is a motion to approve a donation of $250 to Veteran Services from Jeffrey R. and Christina M. Shury, and George W. and Frances A. Bell, in memory of Edith Butler.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a donation of $25 to Veteran Services from Janet F. Haynes, in memory of Edith Butler.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a donation of $20 to Veteran Services from Christina R. Baker, in memory of Edith Butler.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a donation of $300 to Veteran Services from Kathleen P. and Peter Rico, Maxine R. Hargrave, Ellen D., and Meredith B. Lee, and Walpo Outdoors LLC, in memory of Edith Butler.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a $100 donation to the Council on Aging from John Schuyler, in memory of Antoinette Schuyler.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a $1,050 donation from the Friends of Boyd and Library for Museum Pass purchases.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the November 26, 2019 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just great job on the minutes.
Yeah, very thorough.
That was thanks to our senior volunteer, Cynthia Tracy.
Yeah.
She said, she said, "I actually enjoy doing this," because she's like, I found a lot of information about the town. I thought it was actually good, so it was great. I appreciate it.
Glad you gave her credit, because I was going to praise you up and down.
She was able to take on both those in the November 11th minutes in order to?
To take some stuff off her plate right now.
Great, it was good.
All right, any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
A motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.